All right, everybody. We are live. Welcome. Bienvenue à l'année. I'd like to begin the meeting with a couple of quick comments, remarks. First, I'll start with Councilor Dufour. Happy birthday. And maybe watching at home, my son Max turns four today, so happy birthday, Max. Hopefully, I'll be home to read a bedtime story. I also want to, on a more serious and somber note, remember Gary Trumbinski, who was a city councillor from 1983 to 1985, and again, from 1995 to 1997. Gary was an active member in the community up to the time of his death. Last week, he was a trustee on the Huron Spirit Catholic District School Board and had previously been the chair of the school board as well. Gary is one of the founding members of the Queen Street Crews. And I know the Queen Street Crews is doing a memorial ride for him on Thursday, the date of his funeral. Gary leaves behind mourning his children, Gary Junior, Kyle and Glenn, and his grieving wife, Edith. And the Sioux is grieving as well. We have lost a community champion, and we all owe Gary an enormous debt of gratitude for all he did to the Sioux. All he did for the Sioux, I should say, over so many years. So we mourn with the Trumbinski family on the loss of Gary. Beyond that, we've got Adam Bernardo, the Chair of Mayak, who is here to give us a reminder, Adam, if you want to join us at the mic, of an upcoming gala. Welcome to council, Adam.
Thank you. Hello, City Council, Mr. Mayor and City staff. Thank you all for allowing the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council the chance to speak at this council meeting. We are excited to announce and remind anyone who may already know that Mayak will be hosting the annual Mayak Art Gala, which gives the Sioux youth a chance to show off their artistic skills. Various forms of art will be showcased, such as photography, drawings, paintings, as well as live music. Events like this are so important as it can help spark youth's exposure and potentially help them start a career with an art form they love. As well, it celebrates and acknowledges the skills, dedication, and creativity that our local youth has. The event will be taking place at the Ermentinger Clerk National Historic Site from 12 to 4 this Saturday on October 18. Admissions will be $10 per person, with all baked treats and refreshments included. For our benefactors this year, we felt that we should focus on supporting youth that are potentially suffering from food insecurity. To help support the fight against this issue, we decided that all proceeds will be going to the Every Breakfast Counts program. If we are able to, any extra baking ingredients, as well as baked goods, will be given out either to the Soup Kitchen or Harvest Algoma. We're hoping to see many of you come out to support the Sioux's youth at our event. We also thought we should tempt some of the councillors to attend by offering some sample brownies in the council lounge, which are waiting for you after the meeting. I hope that the announcement at City Council reaches others in the community who may be watching today. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Adam. If you could just remind us the time, date, and location of the gala?
It will be Saturday, October 18, from 12 to 4, at the Ermentinger Clerk National Historic Site.
Also known as the Old Stone House.
Also known as the Old Stone House.
All right. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, we'll begin with, in a good way, as we do, by acknowledging with respect that we are in Robinson-Huron Treaty territory and that the land on which we are gathered is the traditional territory of the Anishnaabe and known as Bawatting. And Bawatting is home to Garden River First Nation, Bajwanah First Nation, and the historic Sioux-Saint Marie Métis Council.
I have a motion by councillors Bruny and Kaputo, resolved at the minutes of regular council meeting of September 22, 2025, be approved.
All in favor? That carries.
And I have, Councilor Dufour has declared a conflict with respect to Agenda Item 9.1, the DSAB presentation request, as he's an employee of the DSAB. I haven't received any others.
Any other conflicts, council? No, saying none.
I have a motion by councillors Kinnick and Segordo, resolved that the agenda for October 14, 2025, City Council meeting as presented be approved.
All in favor? That carries. We have a planning matter on the agenda, which is matter 8.7.1.
That is A-925-Sed, 72 Cory Avenue. Some motion by councillors Bruny and Kaputo, resolved that the report of the junior planner dated October 14, 2025, concerning A-925-Sed, 72 Cory Avenue, be received and that council rezone the subject property from Parks and Recreation Zone to Gentle Density Residential Zone and that the legal department be requested to prepare the necessary bylaws to effect the same.
Mr. Tenazo, could you share with us a brief summary of this report?
Thank you, Mayor Shoemaker. The subject property is located at the north end of Manitou Park, north side of Cory Avenue at its intersection with Wyber Street. This property is part of the Access to Land Program and has been declared surplus by council. And the proposed R2 zoning is consistent with surrounding properties. So the recommendation is to approve, and I'm available should council have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tenazo. Is there anybody here to speak in favor of the application for 72 Cory Avenue? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the application for 72 Cory? Council, any questions? Councillor Kaputo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mine is just more of a comment. I have been dealing with the individuals who neighbor the property. They both expressed interest in it, and as I understand it, likely may put forward an RFP. I just, in the future, personally, I would like to see properties being put forward for this program that maybe could handle a little bit more housing. All that can be put onto this property, I believe, if I'm correct, is, would be one single-family dwelling. Am I correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There could be room for a duplex.
Okay. Just, you know, the residents were, had started this process in asking to purchase the property, which is sort of what's put this into play. And I just don't love the way that it played out. I wish that some more consideration would have been given to potentially those individuals being able to bid before this went out to RFP. But those are just my comments, and I appreciate it.
Anyone else? I'll just take a bit of a contrarian position to where councillor Kaputo is. I think the RFP will get us the most money that we can get for it, and seeing it developed with the greatest density will get us the most tax revenue we could get from it. So I think this is a very reasonable process to have followed and support the request for rezoning and the request to put it out as part of the Access to Land Program, so. Council, with that, we could have a vote on the matter? All in favor? Any opposed? That carries. Is councillor Hollingworth, she was online, right? Or not yet?
She has joined.
Not yet? Okay. She's done. Okay. Thank you.
So there's...
In favor, except councillor Kaputo.
So that carries eight to one with councillor Kaputo opposed.
6.1.
Agenda item 6.1, IPA Power Canada, Proposed Battery Project. And there is a presentation.
Welcome to councillor, council, Jesus Louise. Welcome. It's not even six minutes into the meeting, and I'm stumbling over my words. Welcome to council. The floor is yours.
Good evening, Your Worship, councillors, City Staff, and Community Members. My name is Andre Benjic. I'm Director of Development for IPA Power Canada. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. I'm here to present two proposed projects to the city of St. Marie. Before I do that, I'd like to introduce the company. If you can advance the slide, please. And tell you a little bit more about IPA Power Canada. It's a company that was founded in Toronto in 2019, 2018, pardon me, with the goal to build resilient communities and support stable and reliable electricity system in Ontario. Since then, IPA Power has grown to be one of the world's leading battery energy storage independent power producers, with currently over 80 projects in development and operation, out of which 25 in Ontario. Of those Ontario projects, you have received a recently LT-1 contract by the IESO and a direct support of the Ministry of Energy and the IESO as critical energy infrastructure projects in Ontario. Next slide, please. We are proud to serve the Canadian grid economy and workforce by strengthening the Canadian energy independence. We're investing over $600 million into energy infrastructure projects in Ontario by supporting strong Canadian supply chain, of which 82% of scope for the two awarded LT-1 projects are coming from Canadian goods and supply, goods and services, and by powering local jobs by creating over 400 jobs through powered by Canadian Union of Local Skilled Workforce. Next slide. Our design and development guiding principles are strong community engagement with continuous community outreach, local information sessions, dedicated project websites for ease of information sharing, and focused indigenous engagement. Respectful design by providing a thoughtful design that well integrates into the community values, and by best-in-class safety approach by meeting and exceeding all the local, provincial, and federal safety standards and providing local emergency response plan and 24/7 site monitoring. Next slide, please. So what you see on the screen is the two projects that we will be commencing construction of in December. These are similar projects that we are proposing to the city of St. Marie. And you will see there on the left side, one project is in the township of Centre Wellington, and the other one is in the county of Haldimond. And both projects show the pictures of renderings that employ those guided design principles of extensive screening and conservative setbacks. Next slide, please. We have conducted a comprehensive site selection process, which is a multi-stage process, including some technical stages guided by the IESO on the electricity system, and comprehensive environmental constraint and land use analysis, which led us in a well-informed decision to propose a site at the N91 Great Northern Road in St. Marie. Next slide, please. The site is located just north of the third-line Hydro One Transmission Station on a private property, which is currently zoned industrial, with the adjacent uses of being commercial and industrial, and the, well, over 500 meters setback to the next residence nearest to the project. Next slide, please. So we are proposing two projects to the city. One is called Sioux Reliability Project, which is 380-megawatt, 8-hour battery energy storage project, which is roughly a cool land of being able to power 150,000 homes for eight hours every day, or reduce emissions by approximately 125 passenger vehicles being driven every day. This project will be proposed into LT-2 procurement in December. And currently, we are undertaking multiple surveys on the site as we speak, including environmental surveys, the environmental site acceptance phase one, and the preliminary geotech analysis. This site is, this project is proposed to connect to the new transmission line that is coming into service, passing through the property, and it's estimated value of about half a billion. The next slide. The second project is half the size of the first one. It's called Sioux Reliability Project 2, and it is 190-megawatt, 8-hour system. It will be sited on the same property. The only difference is that this project is proposed to connect to the existing transmission line that is running adjacent to the property and will be roughly on half the acreage on that property. Next slide, please. Both projects are sharing the same schedule. Some of the key milestones that I'd like to mention is advancing the projects into the bid on December 18, if it achieves municipal support resolution today. And then, post-bid, announcing the project, if it's successful, mid-next year, and go into the construction in 2028 and into operation in 2029. And the final slide, please. Is the summary of municipal community benefits include employment creation. The projects will create approximately 200 to 300 full-time temporary construction jobs, plus about six full-time jobs during the operating term of the project. Then, providing the local business growth by engaging local vendors and contractors for opportunities to bid on project services. And then, finally, the financial contribution to the community in terms of, starting on the first anniversary of the project operation, the project is committed to contribute $3,000 per megawatt annually to the municipality, which equals roughly about $1.7 million annually for both projects, if both projects are successful. In addition to that, the project is committed to contribute $25,000 per year to support the local organizations for the term of the operating of the project. And then, finally, between the execution of LT-2 contract and the COD, project is committed to contribute $10,000 per year into the municipality. And this is all in addition to increase in the property taxes once these projects are assessed. That ends my presentation, and I would like to open up for questions and welcome any questions. Thank you.
Councillor Bruny?
Thank you very much for your presentation. On one of your last, or probably your last one, it states here the 20-year life. So that's 20-year life of the batteries?
So the reference 20 or 21 years, and I'll explain in a minute, is the term of the contract. If we are successful with the IESO bidding process, we will get awarded a contract that has end of the operation date. And this is where 20 or 21 years comes in. Depends on when we start the project. We have opportunity to start early, commercial operations, so if we start early, we could likely have 21-year term on it. Or if it starts at what's called milestone operation date, then it's going to have 20, 20-year operating term on it.
Happens after.
So after that, project will be decommissioned. The land that the project is proposed on is going to be leased land, and it will be returned back to the landowner after the project is decommissioned.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councillor Bruny. Councillor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Am I allowed to ask staff questions? But that's pretty good. Perfect. Thank you for the presentation. My questions are actually primarily with staff. So through you, Mr. Mayor, to, I'm not sure where to direct this, but the proposed location, is that going to interfere with the potential sack bill extension in any way? Mr. Rumiel?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Scott. No, I don't believe so.
Perfect. And then, the next question would be for Chief Johnson. So I'll start by saying congratulations on the announcement of your retirement. It'd be a big loss. In your opinion, the location, is it in too close a proximity to other buildings if a fire were to break out? Or do you think that we'd have a pretty good response time as well with the location?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Scott. We've reviewed the information, and we attended the information session. And no, we don't have any concern right now.
Perfect. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Scott. Councillor Vazuelin?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor, to Mr. Van Staeveren. And thank you for the presentation. Mr. Van Staeveren, in terms of vetting the corporation that's been around since 2018, and there's 25 battery storage operations that they have in service, what has been your experience in communicating with other communities that have the battery storage, with dealing with them as a corporation coming into a community? Sorry, you don't have the mic.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the councillor. We've just done commercial analysis of the businesses, so we take a look at them. Anytime they come into us, we do a thorough analysis of what the business is, how long they've been in business, are they legitimate, et cetera. So that's about it at this point. This is a very preliminary report.
Yeah. So you've not received feedback, or recommendation, or comments, or working history with any of the communities where they have current battery storage? the communities where they have current battery storage facilities?
No, I have not.
Okay. Thank you. My next question is for Andre. In terms of community engagement, what have you completed so far, and what is your plan moving forward?
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. Through you, Mayor. So we started community engagement beginning of September with conducting two rounds of mailouts for invitations for the public open house, which we have conducted on September 18th. We have also followed up the public open house with direct door-to-door outreach, and that is so far the community engagement that we have executed. Our experience is that generally we respect people's time and schedules and don't do deep dive comprehensive engagement until we have a contract. Otherwise, they might be inundated by multiple proponents doing the same thing. So out of respect, our community engagement will continue sometime mid-next year. I can reference what we've done on previous projects that we have had in the community engagement for roughly about two years. We have conducted six public sessions between public open houses and informational sessions. For one of our projects in Centre Wellington, we have done direct residence outreach to over 400 homes by being there for residents to answer their question and hear their concerns. And then we have came back, we have come back to the township with addressing those concerns and potentially integrating some of that feedback into our project going forward.
In terms of other communities that you have worked with, are you able to provide letters of recommendation or testimonials from other communities that you have worked with thus far in your battery storage facilities?
Yeah, certainly. I don't see that a problem. Yeah.
Okay. So basically, just to get the timeline, if we don't approve this in principle moving forward, you're unable to submit the application that's due in December to the IESO. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vezoalan. Counselor Spina.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question for our guest, building on what Counselor官had asked about earlier about the decommissioning. Can you take us through what the decommissioning is of a site like this, please?
Certainly. Thank you, Counselor. Through you, Mayor. So generally, decommissioning process starts at the end of the operating life, and it's followed through the land restoration as well. We project that to be roughly about two- to three-year process. Depends on what the land needs to be restored to, and decommissioning includes removing all the equipment, the foundation from the, from the land, and then re-establishing the land with the vegetation afterwards. So it's brought back to the original condition as it was taken.
Wonderful. Thank you. That's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Spina. Other councils? Counselor Caputo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to our presenter. So once decommissioned, are there environmental risks for post-decommission?
Thank you, Counselor. Through you, your worship. Just make sure I understand the question. Are you asking if there are environmental risks post-project, what's left behind? Is that the question?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So, so we, before we even build the project, we established a benchmark with the, the environmental site assessment phase one, which has to do with contamination, and we documented really well so that we are not dealing with potentially already present contamination on the site, which obviously would have to be cleared if there is any before we start a construction. And then, then after the project, once we restore the land, we do the same to make sure that there's no contamination left after the project.
Okay. Thank you. That's, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Counsel官
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Andre. Andre, thanks for coming in to provide us this information. I either noticed on your website or in your presentation this weekend that your company's a Blackstone Portfolio Company? Yes?
Correct.
Okay. So just for explanation, does that mean that they are, like, they essentially own or have owned you? Could you qualify that for me?
So, yeah, thank you for your question, Counselor. Through you, the mayor. So IPOP Power Canada is an independent company that benefits from institutional investments of Blackstone Portfolio. It is managed by the, by its own board of directors, independently managed and operated, out of which three of those board of directors, including the CEO, are Canadian, Canadian residents, or citizens, I should say. So it is an independent company that benefits from Blackstone Investments.
Thanks. Counselors Gordo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation today. We appreciate that, and it's very detailed and a lot of good information. Just one question, though. Now that you've dealt with other communities, can you share with us other concerns that communities have had, other than the contamination piece?
Thank you for your question, Counselor. Through you, your worship. Yeah, for sure. Some of the common, some of the common concerns are proximity to residential areas, potential fire safety risk, and all of those concerns are well mitigatable, given the technology and the site selection and the proximity that we use in selecting the site. So we are learning from our experience and doing the site selection accordingly.
Just in follow-up to that, you know, not to sound negative, but we always have to look at, you know, all aspects of any project. What would be a worst-case scenario with battery storage and power storage in any other community, or would be in ours as well? What is the number-one thing that we would have to really be concerned about? I know fire has been mentioned. That's a potential. Is that probably it?
So the fire safety is well-tested and studied area of battery energy storage systems, and it very much depends on the type of technology that is selected. There are many battery energy storage technologies out there. What we are proposing for this project is the same technology we use in the, in the southern Ontario. It's something called LFP, lithium-ion phosphate, which is the safest possible technology available. So although it is perceived as a risk, is well mitigatable, and with the proper emergency response and intervention plan, we feel that given the setbacks that are surrounding the site, there is no risk on, on the community.
And just a final question. Is there any special safety concerns or training that would be required for such a battery storage or battery powers?
Thank you for your question again. Through you, your worship. For sure, training is required, and we are committed to do comprehensive training of both the community and the Sault Ste. Marie Fire Services Department. As an example, with the projects that I referenced, we have conducted a dedicated fire safety information roundtable session for the community.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors Gordo. Other counselors? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a comment. I think I would feel more comfortable voting in favor if we had more robust information about your company, if we had feedback from the public sessions, and if we had testimonials and recommendations from your current communities that you have battery storage. I'm not against economic development. I would just like to make a better informed decision, so at this point, I'm not going to vote in favor, but I would make a recommendation that if you do come back to council, that those missing pieces of information are really critical for us to make that type of decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Do I have an opportunity to reflect on that, or?
No, that was a comment, but I've got questions which may help clarify some of this. Mr. Ver, if you could explain to us why this project's coming to us now, and perhaps similarly, why the EDF, PUC, and, and this project, the IPOP Power project, are all coming to us at this point, and at what point in the process is this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To your question, the, the process that we're in now is one that's prescribed by the IESO for what is called the LT2, Long Term Two Energy Procurement Projects. So there's two streams to this project. One is energy generation, and the other is battery storage. The battery storage applications are due in December for this process, and so that's why we are seeing these projects come forward to city council at this time. Again, the process is prescribed by the IESO, where they have asked for municipal support resolutions for all projects in order for the projects to proceed in the application process. That does mean that all the projects that are becoming, are coming before us will not necessarily be approved by IESO. These are competitive procurement processes, so IESO will assess all the projects that are before them and then determine which projects will move ahead. From their perspective, IESO would like to have a general notional acknowledgement whether the projects will be accepted in their communities as they consider the different offers. Once a project is approved by IESO, they've been very clear that, you know, any municipal regulations or planning approvals that are required will be, follow the same processes that municipalities have in place, and all those approvals, if required, would need to come before council in their normal course, as they would for any other project. I recognize that these projects come before council a little before council normally sees projects, in that site proponents for any of the projects haven't necessarily gone through the detailed site design, the detailed studies, in order to do that, just because their projects are not approved, and obviously those consulting costs are extensive for the projects. So it's coming before council a little earlier than council would normally see projects, but that is as part of this prescribed process by the IESO, and why we are seeing these projects now as they lead into their applications.
Thanks, Mr. Ver. And from a community perspective, or a community demand perspective, if you know, what is our shortfall in energy capacity versus what we need in order to power the community and the industry that's here?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Sault Ste. Marie was an area identified by the IESO as requiring or beneficial for these power projects. That's part of the reason why we're seeing interest from proponents in our area. With the addition of the Electric Arc Furnace from Algoma Steel, that will consume all the current power that the community has, and then once that new transmission line is built, estimated to be 2029, 2030 timeframe, then the community would have the ability to receive energy from that transmission line. That will provide some excess capacity in the entire region served by the transmission line. We do know there's a number of projects in our region and in our area that will acquire additional electrical capacity. So I guess, long story short, we are in need of power. These projects will be beneficial to the community in terms of, A, generation projects, but then battery storage projects as well, and helping to meet the needs of Sault Ste. Marie now and in the future for further economic development projects.
Yeah. I think, put a bit more plainly, and perhaps, correct me if I'm wrong, Algoma Steel needs twice as much power as the city consumes from all the residential houses in the city and all the commercial businesses in the city. Is that correct?
Yeah. Through you, Mr. Mayor, that is correct. The, the EAF project is twice the amount of electricity needed for our entire community.
And there is not that power currently available in the city.
That's correct.
And so the generation projects that we had at the last meeting from EDF and PUC would help bolster that generation capacity?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that is correct. Yes.
And the project that's before us today would help with surge demand and off-peak battery storage in the hours that there was less demand to supplement when there was more demand.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that is correct, and I think the other thing with battery storage is it does enable renewable energy sources to have the capability to store their power if they're generating when that power load is not required.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. So I mean, from my perspective, this is all economic development for our region, for our community. We don't have enough power as it is for our main industry, let alone being able to grow the additional commercial and industrial operations that might be vetting our city currently. So all of these projects make a lot of sense and are needed, and what we ask of one, we should be asking of all of them. If we're going to require testimonials from any of them, we should require them from all of them. I don't think that's necessary, since it's such a preliminary phase of the project, and I support this one. And as problems have arisen with this process, we have tried to correct them in ways like we are tonight. Last week, last week, I should say, last council meeting, there was the issue with the site plan at the PUC. Airport proposed development, we're correcting it with a motion, well, maybe, we, there's the opportunity to correct it with a motion that's on the council agenda tonight, and I know lots of folks are here interested in the outcome of that vote as well. So I don't see any particular issues preliminarily with this proposal. Support it and support it going through the application process and the public input process that comes after that, but definitely support the ask that's before us tonight for the submission to be put into the IESO.
So is there a vote on that matter, Madam?
Oh, yes. There's quite a long resolution.
So similar to last meeting, there's actually two projects, but rather than you have to listen to both the, the same things being repeated, I'll read it once and then insert the particulars. Sioux Reliability Project One is 380 megawatts, and Project Two is 190 megawatts. And there is a bylaw on consent. It's a motion by councillors Kinnick and Zagordo, resolved that the report of the manager of Business Attraction, Economic Development dated October 14, 2025, concerning the proposed battery storage project be received, and that council approved the municipal support resolution as outlined below. Whereas the proponent is proposing to construct and operate a long-term capacity services project located on municipal project lands as defined and with the characteristics outlined in the table below, under the Long Term Two Capacity Services Window One Request for Proposals issued by the Independent Electricity System Operator. And whereas the capitalized terms not defined herein have the meanings ascribed to them in the LT2C1RFP, and whereas the proponent has delivered no later than 60 days prior to the proposal submission deadline, a pre-engagement confirmation notice to an applicable local body administrator in respect of the municipal project lands that includes the details outlined in the table below, except for the unique project ID, which should only be required as part of the pre-engagement confirmation notice if available. The unique project ID of the Long Term Capacity Services Project is not available. It's typical, it typically issued by the IESO at mid-stage, and that's true for both projects. The legal name of the proponent is Sioux Reliability Project One LP and Sioux Reliability Project Two LP. The name of the Long Term Capacity Services Project is the Sioux Reliability Project and Sioux Reliability Project Two. Technology of the Long Term Capacity Services Project is a battery energy storage system for both. The maximum potential contract capacity of the Long Term Capacity Services Project in megawatts is 380 for Project One and 190 for Project Two, and then there are PIN numbers connected with those properties. And whereas pursuant to the LT2C1RFP, if the Long Term Capacity Services Project is proposed to be located in whole or in part on municipal project lands, the proposal must include municipal support confirmation, which may be in the form of a municipal resolution in support of proposal submission. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Sault Ste. Marie supports the submission of a proposal for the Long Term Capacity Services Project located on the municipal project lands. This resolution's sole purpose is to satisfy the mandatory requirements of Section 4.2 C3 of the LT2C1RFP, and may not be used for the purpose of any other form of approval in relation to the proposal or Long Term Capacity Services Project or for any other purpose. The proponent has undertaken or has committed to undertake Indigenous and community engagement activities activities in respect of the Long Term Capacity Services Project to the satisfaction of the municipality. The municipal project lands does not include lands designated as prime agricultural areas in the city of Sioux St. Marie's official plan. Where the municipal project lands does include lands designated as prime agricultural areas in the city of Sioux St. Marie's official plan, as of the date of this resolution, the municipal project lands are not designated as specialty crop areas. The Long Term Energy Project is not a non-rooftop solar project. The proponent has satisfied the AIA Component 1 requirement to the satisfaction of the local municipality. And if the proponent is selected as a selected proponent under the LT2 C1 RFP, the council of the city of Sioux St. Marie will engage in good faith with the selected proponent to enable the selected proponent to complete the AIA Components 2 and 3 requirement. And I will first cast the Project 1, that is, the 380 megawatt. And that is open for voting.
As well as all in favor? Any opposed? That carries.
That carries with councilors Bezzell Allen and Caputo opposed. And now I will cast for the 190-megawatt project.
All in favor? Opposed? That carries.
And that carries the same with both councilors Bezzell Allen and Caputo opposed.
Counsel, I... Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe there are a number of folks in the gallery who are interested in the outcome of 9.2. So before we go to consent, we will jump to 9.2 and then we will go to consent. Clerk?
Under Agenda Item 9.2, PUC Solar Project Site Plan Control, it's a motion by councilors Gardi and Scott, whereas at the September 22, 2025 council meeting, the council of the city of Sioux St. Marie approved in principle a support resolution for the PUC West End Solar Farm in and around the Sioux St. Marie Airport, DeShane Drive, Nakomas Beach Road, and other areas surrounding those locations. And whereas concern was raised by council and neighborhood residents about the prospect of solar panels on the locations shown by PUC as Array 4 and Array 5 specifically being areas near DeShane Drive and Nakomas Beach Road. And whereas the city of Sioux St. Marie has delegated authority to the Planning Director with respect to site plan control for all properties subject to site plan control in the city of Sioux St. Marie. And whereas the Sioux St. Marie Airport Development Corporation is subject to site plan control and the proposed Array 4 and Array 5 locations for solar panels are on the Sioux St. Marie Airport Development Corporation lands. And whereas the council of the city of Sioux St. Marie wishes to avoid, to the greatest degree possible, conflict between the installation of solar panels and the natural habitats and tranquility of the area while recognizing the need for additional power generation in the community at large. Now, they appropriate resolve that the council of the city of Sioux St. Marie revokes the delegation of site plan control previously given to the Planning Director as it relates to site plan control for the installation of solar panels in Array 4 or Array 5 of the PUC West End Solar Project and assumes responsibility for approval of the site plan for any solar panels within those two locations.
Counselor Gardi and Counselor Scott, I'll go to you in a minute. But I think it's relatively plain what this motion is looking to do. There was concern raised at the last meeting by a number of residents in the area about those specific locations off Nakomas Beach Road and off DeShane Drive as to whether or not solar panels were properly placed there or should be properly placed there. The Planning Department had authority to approve the site plan if PUC is successful and if they determine that those two sections of land are needed for their solar panel installation. The Planning Department had authority to approve the location and layout of those panels on those two locations specifically, nothing to do with the old golf course. But now what council is saying is it will come to council if there are to be any solar panels on those two locations, near DeShane Drive and near Nakomas Beach Drive. So at that point, there would be the opportunity for neighbors to comment on the proposed location and layout of the solar panels if they even need them. If they decide to just put solar panels, so one, if they're successful in their LT2 application, and if they decide to put panels only on the golf course and not in these two locations, they would not need to come back to council. But if they need to come back to council, it would be to approve the location and layout of solar panels in those two spots. So with that, Counselor Gardi and Counselor Scott, you moved and seconded the motion, so I'll give you the opportunity to go first.
No, I'm glad I was going to explain things too, but you, I'm sure you did a much better job than I would have. So thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. You know what? What you summarized, in my opinion, was a clear democratic exercise. There was something brought forward for our community, which I think will benefit the community, but the people in the immediate area had some concerns. This council listened to both sides and we decided to exercise some control moving forward. And like you said, next time, if they get approved, as they come to us, same sort of same sort of thing will occur and we'll go from there. But I appreciate everybody's coming forward and expressing their concerns. And I also appreciate everybody around this table, especially for a counselor who represents the West End, that you valued the input of the residents and we'll move forward together for the best fit for our community and for that that area of town. Thanks.
Counselor Gardi, Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not to drag it on, basically everything that Counselor Gardi said, I want to thank yourself and staff for working together to get this done and for everyone who showed up, as Counselor Gardi said, to exercise the democratic rights. And yeah, so hopefully this comes back and we don't need it, but if we do, we're ready.
Thank you, Counselor Scott. Counselor Dufour?
Yeah, just one quick comment to add, if I may, Mr. Mayor. One of the important things about this resolution and site plan control is that when a developer would be coming forward with a plan for site plan control, they would have detailed design work done at that point. And so I think that's just a really important distinction between some of the other projects that we've dealt with and that we may be dealing with. You know, there is a reason why they don't have detailed design now and there's a reason why this project, if it's needed in Area 4 and 5, will have detailed design at that point to allow for more accurate and robust community engagement and involvement to happen at that point. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Caputo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wondered, did anyone speak to PUC? Or I'm just wondering about, would this negatively impact their application at all?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Caputo, I did speak with Rob Brewer about that. Council did approve the municipal support resolution at the last meeting for the projects. Are they able to continue with the project? They do understand the need to come back to council and the caveats therein, the message delivered. And so they will plan to proceed with that in mind.
Okay.
It won't negatively impact, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we can have a vote on that motion. All in favor? Any opposed? That carries. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda, Madam Clerk.
Yes, it does.
There are, since there are additional parties here on additional matters, I'll bring up a few matters off the top to help expedite folks getting home as quick as possible. Just trying to find where they are. 7.14, the establishment of public library. The report is self-explanatory, but are there questions, counsel? All right. 714, establishment of public library. Good history lesson we got from the report. So thank you to Mr. King for drafting it. And I think, is this week Public Libraries Week? Next week. Next week's public, so we will officially have a public library established by bylaw for Public Libraries Week. Okay, then, I know there are others. Commerce Street, 712. Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy to see this come back. So I do appreciate that, I want to just start out with more, some comments, and I appreciate staff taking the effort and time on this one. I know it's tricky and a lot to it, but I do appreciate the reopening, and as I'm sure a lot of the folks that are here do as well, even with the added load restrictions. Don't really have any questions yet, but I do just want to express once again that I'm extraordinarily hopeful that we can see this bridge replaced in the future rather than closed. As outlined in the report, there's a lot of concerns expressed by the folks that live there, very valid concerns beyond just the convenience, there are safety concerns involved. And I think we owe it to the folks that are out there that, you know, there's been a bridge, there should continue to be a bridge. And I'm happy that for now there will be some form of way to get through that bridge, but just hopeful that maybe we could get this replaced in the future and be it with federal or provincial funding, however we can get there, even internally. I just wanted to really emphasize that and not let that go. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Scott. Anyone else on 7.6? Counselor Gardi?
Yeah, I'll just echo what Counselor Scott said in his comments. I'm of the opinion that the bridge needs to be replaced. I appreciate the temporary solution. It will alleviate some of the concerns that the residents have, but it's been there for a long, long time. I believe that it's an important piece of infrastructure for the West End of our community. And I know Counselor Scott and I will be hoping and working with some of our colleagues around this table, so if and when the time comes to replace it, it will be replaced. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Gardi. I have a question to probably Public Works. Do we know rough timeline on when the narrowed and load-restricted bridge might be able to be reopened? Oh, maybe that's for engineering?
Mr. Mayor, we have some remedial work as the bridge explains to be completed, so we have to procure some clamps or bridge or pier strapping. Probably hire a contractor to work in the water and Public Works is willing to do some of that legwork as well, or the work, analogous work to that effect.
Is the hope to have it done in this calendar year or?
Yeah, the hope is to have the bridge open before winter maintenance begins, have it open for the winter and then give us enough time to, as the report says, to embark on a, on an EA to find the suitable replacement for the bridge.
Okay, thank you. Other councils on that? 7.6? No? And then YMCA contribution agreement, I see. The CEO of the YMCA is here. Any questions on that or comments? I want to, you know, commend staff and the YMCA group for, folks, if we could just respect that there's still council meeting happening here. No? Thank you, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. YMCA, the council approved up to, is it 505,000 in work to be done at the YMCA as a bit of a backstop. And for that contribution, nearly a million dollars of work has been done and we haven't hit the 505,000 that had been committed. So I think this is a really good example of when council is able to help a community asset like the YMCA, that we take the first step and then other levels of government have come to the table as a result of it and assisted in making sure that all the work that needs to be done at the YMCA gets done. That'll keep it, you know, in a reasonably good condition. I mean, it's a 65-year-old building, I don't want to say in a good condition, but in a reasonably good condition, hopefully for the balance of the lease that the city has with it, which probably about another nine years, and make sure that it continues to serve the community in the way it has for so many generations. So I think that's a real good news story. Anyone else on 7.6? Okay. So anyone else on any other matters on consent? Counselor Kinnick, Counselor Bezzell Allen, starting with you, Counselor Kinnick?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it's going to be 7.1.
Yeah, go ahead. We're going to keep the questions on 7.1 to what's in the report, yeah.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to CA Overe. So just a procedural question. If a member under investigation by the Integrity Commissioner resigns before the inquiry is completed, does the investigation continue or is it closed off at that point?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Kinnick. I would say at that point, the investigation would come to an end, as any penalty really would be moot, they would no longer be a member of council.
Okay, thank you. And to follow up with that, at this point, the preliminary report is an estimated of the, of the cost of the investigation. The investigation has not started yet.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Kinnick. Yes, the report indicates there is grounds for the investigation and it would commence from this point.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, to CA Overe. So at this point, if the councilor resigns, that would bring the investigation to an end and would avoid the estimated $15,000 for an investigation.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Kinnick. That is correct in terms of process.
Okay, thank you on that.
Sorry? Those are all your questions? Okay. On 7.1, Counselor Gardi?
So I don't have much in the way of questions, but I do have comments.
Go ahead.
May I go ahead?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. So admittedly, I don't necessarily know that I would have pursued the same, the same path as Counselor Caputo. That being said, I want her to know, I want everybody on this council to know that I, and in the community, quite frankly, if people have a problem with it, they can call me or text me or whatever they want to do. But she has a right to her opinions, like anybody else here. And the arbiter of how things proceeded is the Integrity Commissioner. I shouldn't speak for Counselor Caputo, but Counselor Caputo is not going to resign tonight, nor is she going to resign before the findings of the Integrity Commissioner, and she shouldn't. And maybe I'll get called by the Integrity Commissioner after this comment, but I find it appalling, quite frankly, that the suggestion was just made. And if someone comes back and says, that's not what I was suggesting, that's indeed what the individual is suggesting, he's entitled to his opinion and he expressed it, and I'm expressing mine and I'm hopeful that everybody around this council table, and maybe even him when he comes to his better senses after listening to some people potentially, that that is withdrawn. I respect his opinion, but yeah, she's not going anywhere.
Counselor Dufour? On the contents of the report, preferably.
Yes, I have a couple of questions, if that's okay?
Yes.
So my first question has to do with granting of anonymity. In the report, it says that the names of the requesters are all withheld and that all three are members of the public. My question is, when this occurred, councilors, including myself, were in receipt of probably dozens of emails that were signed not with just signatures but with geographic locations outside of Sioux St. Marie, which led me to assume that this issue was being shared probably on social media outside of the bounds of Sioux St. Marie. Now, several of those emails from people who said they did not live in Sioux St. Marie all... Ste. Marie all referenced the Integrity Commissioner, the process, demanding resignations, apologies, things like that. So I quite frankly have a concern with the granting of anonymity for these three complainants. I do believe that it makes a difference if someone is a constituent of the city of Sault Ste. Marie or if they're some random person on Facebook who got angry about something and filed a form email and submitted a complaint. I think that the costs of this investigation are significant in terms of other Integrity Commission investigations that this city has seen. I think $15,000, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Vaire, is probably the most expensive investigation that the city of Sault Ste. Marie has ever paid for. And I'm not comfortable with proceeding under anonymity when I have some very good reasons to believe that folks from outside of Sault Ste. Marie have been involving themselves in this situation. So is it possible to get information from the Integrity Commissioner on why exactly anonymity was granted and if the Integrity Commissioner checks to ensure that people actually are constituents of Sault Ste. Marie before issuing a complaint?
Okay, we, a question of similar nature was asked of the Integrity Commissioner in a previous investigation by the clerk, which was prompted by a question that was asked by a counselor. And the response was code of conduct with respect, she reviewed the code of conduct with respect to confidentiality and it does not mandate complete confidentiality for complaints, but provides that complaints are to be treated as confidential to the extent possible. The flip side of that coin is that the code of conduct notes that there is an obligation to treat the individual to whom a complaint relates to fairly. And so there's this balance between anonymity and treating the person to whom the complaint relates to fairly. And the overlying basis of the investigation is that it should be to the degree possible confidential. So I know that doesn't provide a real clear-cut answer. Just that's what the answer was from the Integrity Commissioner in a previous, in response to a previous question about an unrelated matter.
So are we allowed to clarify these matters within our municipal code of conduct to further delineate the grounds under which we believe anonymity should be granted?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Dufour. We are looking at amending our code of conduct and updating it with these sorts of things that we've discovered as we've worked through some of these processes. And that's one of the things that we want to clarify more. And I also would expect that the Integrity Commissioner would identify in her report, not identify the people, but I would expect that it would speak to being citizens or non-residents.
You expect that these ones are citizens?
No, I would expect that that would be addressed within her final report, but not identify the names.
Okay, yeah, I would appreciate if it was addressed at a bare minimum in this case. I do still continue to have concerns with the fact that anonymity appears to be granted by default to every single complaint that we've had. And I think that there should be some parameters around where anonymity is appropriate, because certainly there are cases where it is appropriate, but I don't believe it's all cases. And I would like some confirmation from the Integrity Commissioner that the complainants in this case specifically are residents of Sault Ste. Marie. I do think that that speaks to the quality of the complaint, quite frankly. My last question to you, Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Vaires, can city council, upon a vote, decline to investigate at this point and thereby save the $15,000?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Dufour. No, the process. This is part of the process. This is the first stage, is the preliminary, and there's not an opportunity for council to intervene in that process at this stage.
So even though council has a vote on the ultimate consequence or the enforcement of that consequence, council has no choice upon receipt of a complaint but to investigate and pay for the attendant investigation?
That's correct.
Okay. Those are all my questions. As for a comment, it's the same comment as other Integrity Commissioner investigations that this council has been in receipt of. The last council I was a member of, it was not like this. We did not spend a lot of money on these complaints and that was not because we agreed on everything. During our last council, we had plenty of healthy disagreement. A lot of it played out in the four walls of this room as well. It was discourse that was good faith debate and I think the community was better for it. I think that using Integrity Commissioners to adjudicate political disagreements satisfies no one and it generates more complaints. And it's just the lawyers who make money on these things, folks. So I would really like to see our code of conduct cleaned up to hopefully keep some of these from coming to us, because I don't believe they serve a good purpose. Thank you.
You, Counsel Dufour. Counsel Bezzell? Did I go to you? No.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor, and this is strictly on the actual code of conduct. So maybe Ms. Zinski or Mr. Vaire. In our municipal code of conduct, is there a policy or a rule in terms of our personal use of our social media, in terms of communication and any retroactive actions? So I'm trying to, just concern, is it an actual violation of the municipal code of conduct or is it perceived? Is there actually something in black and white about our personal use of our social media?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Bezzell. It does not currently include reference to social media. And in updates that we anticipate bringing to council for consideration, certainly a social media policy should form part of that.
So with the Integrity Commissioner recommending an investigation, under what section of the code of conduct are they using to investigate?
I don't know, but...
That would be referenced in the final report.
That'll be referenced in the final report. So we don't know at this point. Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Bruny?
I'd be very brief. I think taking questions is fine, but providing personal thoughts should be held back until the report from the Integrity Commissioner comes back. You're entertaining comments and I think that's kind of dangerous. Nobody's guilty yet, but questions to be asked, definitely. But I think the comments, Mr. Mayor, has to be restricted, that there is no comments and just questions alone. That's all.
If I had that power, Counsel Bruny, I would use it.
You do.
Not according to the procedure by law.
Yes.
Other counselors? I think Counsel Bruny's right. I do have thoughts and opinions on this. I'll wait till the final report is complete. It's preliminary at this point and once the report comes back, I'll have more to say. Okay, we were on Counsel Kinnick. Oh, sorry. Are you on? Yeah, go ahead.
Just one question, so it's cleared for everyone, because we keep mentioning bringing a complaint forward. What is the procedure for bringing a complaint forward? Is it online only, paper submission? Just so that we're clear on that, if you can answer that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselors Agordo. There is a request for investigation form that's available on our website or on paper, and that's sworn before a commissioner of oaths, which is generally myself or the deputy city clerk, but it could be somebody else who has the authority to swear affidavits, submitted to the clerk's office, and then it is sent over to the Integrity Commissioner.
So that individual needs to be present for swearing in? No.
They could always attend somewhere else to have the documents sworn. So another commissioner both could swear it for them, but it does have to come through the clerk's office to go to the Integrity Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Kinnick, other items on consent?
So it's going to be 7.5. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Lamming.
Yep.
Just a question with the Downtown Association Improvement Update. The old DTA had an additional tax for residents in the downtown that supported their funding with the Downtown Association. And I was just wondering, is that like abolished now that we took it over as a city? Or is that still part of this budget? Because I didn't see it in the line items.
You, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Kinnick. The old BIA fee was $218,000 in 2025. That goes away with this being absorbed under the city umbrella.
Okay, thank you. That's all for 7.5.
Yeah, I think that's a critical point of this that should not be let to pass without putting an exclamation on it. The downtown businesses are currently paying an additional tax to the BIA. And as a result of the repeal of this bylaw, that will be funded through the city as opposed to through those 200 or so businesses that front on Queen Street. So it will be a cost savings to the business owners. Anyone else on 7.5? Counsel Dufour?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. This is a question through you to either Mr. Lamming or Perry. I was just wondering if you could talk a little bit more about the Public Works plan to keep the litter pickup level of service that the city performs the same as the level of service that business owners experienced under both the city of Sault Ste. Marie and the BIA.
You, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Dufour. As you're probably aware, we had a cross-section of employees that were part of the plan for making this budget along with the DTA. So the focus of the original resolution was promoting and activating the downtown core, but staff did feel that we didn't want to go back in a service level. So the continued winter and summer maintenance programs will continue with Public Works. We've also hired part-time hours to help with maintenance. Two full-time summer students are going to be dedicated to the downtown core and the full-time events assistants will have programming duties and maintenance responsibilities. So that is mainly what that's composed of. There's also been some hours allocated to things like snow cutouts to get to the lanes where people park, biohazard pickup, and then money allocated to the graffiti removal committee as well.
Okay, so just for the benefit of some of those downtown folks, if I'm a hypothetical business owner, and previously if I came to my place of business to open up and I saw that, you know, someone had sheltered in my breezeway overnight or gone into the dumpster behind the business overnight and overflowed a bunch of garbage, previously they would call the DTA to help clean some of that up. What will be the process after June 1st? January 1st, sorry.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel Dufour would be the point of contact, would be the new events assistant reporting up through our plaza supervisor. So that'd be the point of contact to have that work order issued to make sure that's cleaned up. That'd be the process moving forward. So it'd go from the DTA to Community Development and Private Services.
Okay, and then the work order to have that cleaned up, we would action it regardless of whether it was on private or public property?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Dufour. That is correct.
Okay. And staff from both PW and CSD believe that the level of funding requested here would be adequate to provide the same level of service that people had been accustomed to under the DTA and the extra tax?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Dufour. That is correct. That's why we had the different departments at the table.
Okay. And would there be any further equipment needs from a Public Works perspective to accommodate those? Like we said, we hired, I believe, some part-time summer students. Is there any equipment need for those folks to do their job safely?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Dufour. Yes, we did have to get a vehicle to help with events for transporting equipment back and forth for street closures. So that was a definite, that's built into this budget right here. Also with the new Downtown Development Committee, there will also be input into future budgets to see if there's something that's needed in the future. So they'll be set to meet in the next couple of months once we onboard the new individual. So at this point in time, we're confident that we can address what's been required before, but there's always opportunity to look at future budgets if there's something more that's needed.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counsel Dufour. Counsel Caputo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a counselor that previously, well, still sits on the Sault Downtown Association, I do have some concerns with the budget being presented as it is, mainly because at the bulk of our meetings, the discussion came around cleanup and making sure that the downtown was safe. Those were the two major concerns always brought forward from constituents. That's what I hear from constituents and it's what I heard from the board. I think that respectfully, I think that we're missing the mark with this budget. I think that I do wonder, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Lamming, was it looked at to have a Public Works crew, maybe two, maybe four, whatever your discretion would be, to be assigned specifically to the downtown since when we took over, or sorry, since when we decided to abolish the Downtown Association, we promised that we were going to make sure that we took proper care of it.
You, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Caputo. Yeah, it's a very significant point. One, staff spend a lot of time reviewing. And so what we came up with was to have some reallocation of staff, so especially in the summertime with respect to reallocating two full-time students during the summer months, and then also having the part-time hours more of a maintenance focus with respect to having those hours added, and also adding additional duties to that person that's coming over to add events. Now, this doesn't mean that we don't have our normal cleanup of the downtown core. Public Works has their program, also transit as well. We have our receptacle units on the bus, on the bus stops and shelters, and Public Works will continue to clean up refuse in the downtown core and also their winter control program. So that doesn't change from today.
Okay. So then I guess my question is through you, Mr. Mayor, to Ms. Hamilton Beach. Ms. Hamilton Beach, Mr. Lamming's mentioned that Public Works will take care of, you know, cleaning up refuse and, you know, keeping the downtown clean. About how many times do you think your budget allows you to send a Public Works crew out to clean up the downtown?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Caputo. We once weekly sweep the downtown core throughout the summer months, as well as we would have a general litter pickup person that would receive any calls throughout basically the 24/7 weekly period of time to respond to any waste collection calls.
So Ms. Hamilton Beach, the budget that you're talking about or the allocation that you're speaking of, would that normally just relate to the frontage of Queen that you take care of sweeping?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Caputo. Correct.
Okay, so now my question is going to go back to Mr. Lamming. So, Mr. Lamming, what is the plan when business owners and individuals are calling about messes of any sort happening behind the buildings?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Caputo. We do have a budget line item in the report that allows us to use third-party or staff, especially if it's around biohazard and then graffiti removal, because they'll be allowed to go onto the private property to address those situations, to clean up those areas.
Okay. I think that's all my questions. I just want to say, I think that it is, it's noble of us to want to continue doing events and it's very, those events are very important. From my perspective and from what I hear from my constituents and the community at large, is that they want the downtown to be clean and safe. And many folks say often that they don't find the downtown clean and safe enough. And I'm going to say enough because I think that we do a decent job of... I'm going to say enough because I think that we do a decent job of trying to keep the downtown clean and safe. I will say that I think from perspective of constituents and from my perspective, I would rather see this money be allocated to keeping the downtown clean and safe than worrying about the events. I would hope, I hope that we're able to change people's minds from attending only events like Halloween on Queen or a certain block party, and maybe, you know, being in the downtown five or 10 nights out of the year. I want to see the downtown become clean and safe and a place that people want to just walk around, hang out at the plaza, have their kids go downtown and play. I think we have some work to do, and I just fear that we're not on the right path with this. So I hope that we can take a really good, hard look at how this budget is being allocated and maybe just reconsider putting some more funds towards that cleanliness and safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Caputo. Counselor Bezzellin?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor, to Mr. Lamming. Mr. Lamming, has there been any discussions or planning in terms of police presence from Division II within the Downtown Corps? You know, in terms of there's going to be, you know, two officers walking every day or that sort of thing? Do we know what the intent is currently?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bezzellin. We keep close contact with the Division II unit under Sergeant McFarland. They do have patrols that go on and off during Monday to Friday, 3:00 to 4:30. A lot of the Downtown Presence Corps right now is happening through the Downtown Foot Patrols. There's been about 560 incidents here to date since September, for instances such as vandalism and other things that have happened in the Downtown Corps, so we do get reports on that, and we do escalate those and review those with police to make sure that attention is given to those matters.
So in the budget, the transfer of Downtown patrols of $150,000, is that being taken out so we are not going to be paying for private security?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bezzellin. At the last time we talked about this, the source of $150,000 was identified as a funding source. There still has been a budget request put forward for Downtown Foot Patrols at budget along with this, so there's two separate requests that are being recommended by staff.
Okay, and this may be to Mr. Ver. I know we also support the Downtown Ambassadors through also the Canadian Mental Health Association, so in terms of that and budget, because they are extremely valuable, because they are in those off-peak times, because they operate 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday to Friday, and then all day, Saturday and Sunday, 10 to 6:00. How is that going to affect the Downtown Ambassador's capacity?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bezzellin. Right now, that Downtown Ambassador is a line item in the budget, so that service would continue.
Okay.
No change.
Okay, okay. Just to comment, I think in terms of safety and presence, I'm hopeful that the new formed committee would definitely have around the table law enforcement, folks from CMHA, and even the supervisor from the security company to have a collaborative plan. I think that's what's missing here, is the three entities are not kind of coordinating with each other, from my experience, and I think that would be extremely valuable and definitely value-added in terms of being able to monitor, and we do, like, I was downtown a ton this weekend because the weather was beautiful, and, you know, it's looking gorgeous. The plaza was beautiful, the flowers are beautiful, and lots of positive comments, lots of tourists here to see the fall colors, so we do have a lot of beautiful gifts, and I want to put a shout-out to Public Works because they're keeping the flowers looking beautiful. But I think in terms of making sure that people feel safe, that coordinated effort from those three entities is really important moving forward with that committee, and that would be my recommendation, but thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bezzellin. Anyone else on 7.5? Okay, seeing none. Counselor Kinnick, other items on consent?
Yes. So it's 7.10, Winter Control Maintenance Services Budget Requirements. So through you, Mr. Mayor, to Ms. Shell. So we often hear from you that our reserves are very low, and I just wanted to ask about what's our winter reserve? How, is it healthy, is it not healthy? Could you just give us some information about that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Kinnick. Before this year, I would say that it was reasonable. We haven't used it since it's been established, but this year is an anomaly, and everything is kind of going in the wrong direction. So it is anticipated that the whole $880,000 that is in that reserve will likely have to be used in the fiscal year of 2025. Now, going forward with the plan that we have, with the averaging of the five years, you're going to have the highs and lows in there. So the intent is that the years, hopefully, that we have low-snow, low requirements, that any excess budget will be put into that reserve to manage the spikes going forward.
So, a follow-up. So with the additional request with this report, that would just be to replenish the reserve because we're going to use, transfer that money into the budget, or we keep the reserve and we just add this to the operating budget?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Kinnick. It will be going into the operating budget, and it's only when there is excess budget at the end of a fiscal year that we would put it into the reserve and start building that reserve again.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else on 7.10? Counselor Caputo?
Sorry, my computer restarted in the middle of the meeting. I don't know why it always chooses the middle of the meeting to do that, so just let me pull up my, my question is through you, Mr. Mayor, to Ms. Hamilton Beach. From what I understand in the report, you're not saying that we may never see the improvements that I asked about in my resolution, but rather that, at this point, council is not adequately funding Public Works to maintain its current service level, and what I'm asking for is an increased level of service. So at this time, what you're asking for is for us to increase that amount just to keep the current service level.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Caputo. You are correct. As with all council resolutions, we hope to have a very wholesome approach to it, but we felt it our responsibility to report and to ask that the current service be properly and adequately funded.
Thank you. So my next question will be to CEO Ver. Mr. Ver, if we go ahead and we make the Public Works whole, so to speak, in the next budget, and we wanted to see this level of improvement come back, would I have to rewrite this resolution? Or is this something that can be revisited again in the future?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Caputo. I think, or not I think, from staff's perspective, your resolution's still an outstanding resolution, so we will bring the further analysis back to council in the future on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Caputo. Counselor Dufour?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question through you to Ms. Hamilton Beach. Can you tell me what the loss of the MTO service provision was?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Dufour. There was the highway, I think it's 555, in the West End, we reported and were under agreement to serve MTO. There was about $100,000 to $120,000 worth of effort expended every year to provide that service to them, and they have gone with, I'll call it another contractor, last year and this year. So we noted that in the budget that we will no longer be making that revenue.
Okay, so we've lost that revenue, but we don't have to perform that work either?
Correct.
Gotcha, thank you.
Anyone else on 7.10? Okay, seeing none. Counselor Kinnick, any other items on consent?
No, that's everything, thank you.
Counselor Bezzellin?
7.13.
Yes.
And just a quick question to either Mr. Fazy or Ms. Shell. In terms of the reserve fund, which is just over $2 million through the building report, what can that reserve fund be used for?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bezzellin. The building permit fees and the reserve fund is established by legislation, and Freddie Pozban would probably be best to speak to that, or maybe there's somebody else here that can speak to how that works, but it's prescriptive. So basically, the purpose of that reserve is to fund years where there's not as many permits and that we don't, we still have that same operational cost. So that's technically how it's supposed to be used going forward. We still don't use it for anything else.
It has to stay within the building, like, the building department purview.
Correct.
Okay. That's it.
Mr. Rumiel, anything to add to that?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bezzellin. I don't have very much to add. It's to fund the building division operations as well as, as Ms. Shell stated, to have us hold firm during the lower revenue times.
Thank you.
Anyone else on 7.13? This is a bit of a question that is hypothetical, but I remember when this reserve was like at $500,000. It seems to be building up fairly healthily. Are we, you know, is there, are we increasing our permit fees by too much each year? I know there was a big jump all at once, and then I think it's gone up, you know, in accordance with CPI since then, if I'm not mistaken, but it does seem like it's accumulating quite quickly.
Mr. Mayor, I guess I don't have, I haven't put a lot of analysis to this, but we are, in recent years, we've seen much greater revenue in permit fees than probably the beginning of your council time here, where it was maybe a bit more flat. Maybe it's increased significantly in a short period of time.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, just to add to Director Emil's comments, I think it is something that staff monitor, and so we'll take that into account when we look at setting the building permit fees. I know when I first started at the city, we were in a situation where we didn't have much of a reserve, and we were looking to increase fees in order to provide some cushion, so it's something we'll continue to monitor and look at that each year when we recommend fees.
Thank you. Anyone else on 7.10? No, okay. Counselor Bezzellin, other items on consent?
Nothing.
Anyone else with items on consent? I just wanted to congratulate the fire chief on his retirement. Item 7.2, he will be missed. That's a very long run and well-deserved retirement, so congratulations to you. So, seeing no other items, we can vote on the consent agenda.
We just point out that on 7.3, the 2026 council meeting schedule, you'll see in your e-scribe that those calendars have been updated to include a council meeting on November 9, 2026, for outgoing, the outgoing council council meeting. I'd have a motion by Counselors Kinnick and Segoro, resolved that all the items listed underdate October 14, 2025. Agenda item 7, consent agenda be approved, just recommended?
All in favor. That carries.
That will bring us to Agenda Item 9.1. It's a motion by Counselors Kinnick and Scott, where as the City of Sault Ste. Marie contributes a significant annual levy to the District Social Services Administration Board in support of programs and services including housing, Ontario Works, and childcare, and where as DSAB expenditures form a material portion of the City of Sault Ste. Marie's budget and directly affect the tax levy paid by residents, and where as the City of Sault Ste. Marie, like many communities across Ontario, has experienced a marked increase in homelessness, housing insecurity, and related social pressures that require coordinated responses between municipal government DSAB and community partners, and where as council recognizes the establishment of the HART Homelessness Assistance Response Team Hub as an important initiative in addressing urgent community needs and wishes to better understand its funding, operations, and long-term sustainability within the broader DSAB budget framework, and where as city council has a responsibility to ensure transparency, accountability, and effective stewardship of taxpayer funds allocated to external agencies, and to ensure that resources directed toward homelessness response and prevention achieve measurable outcomes. Now, there appropriate resolve that Sault Ste. Marie City Council formally request that representatives of the District Social Services Administration Board be summoned to attend and deliver a presentation during the city's annual budget proceedings.
Counselor Kinnick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since I've been on council, the DSAB has never presented its budget. The city contributes a significant annual levy to support their programs, a levy that represents a sizable share of our budget and directly affects the taxpayers. Each year, the levy increases, but the issues it's meant to address, particularly homelessness and housing insecurity, continue to worsen, as Mr. Madoff himself noted this year at the board meeting. Reality underscores the need for greater coordination, transparency, accountability, and measurable outcomes. The HART Hub is a promising step, bringing community partners together, but council and the public deserve clarity on how initiatives like this are funded, how the results are tracked, and what long-term sustainability plan looks like. Inviting DSAB to present during our budget proceedings is simply about ensuring that those who play a major role in our community's social well-being are part of an open, accountable conversation. That's why I've drafted this resolution, to ensure that our collective efforts are truly making a difference in our community, and I hope my colleagues here tonight agree with me, and I look forward to the DSAB presentation at this year's budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kinnick. Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just felt that the budget meetings were too short. But seriously, no, more accountability and data is always good, and transparency, I think, is important, and why not have them come and present what they've got going on?
Counselor Bezzellin?
Just two comments. As Treasurer of DSAB and Housing Corp., I spoke with CEO Mike Nato, and he's more than happy to come and present at a mutually agreeable time. Usually, our budget week is a week where he has conflict, so he will reach out to Ms. Tuzinski to set a time. And I also just want to have some clarification within the resolution. The HART Hub funding is not through DSAB, it's the Canadian Mental Health Association, so it's not awarded to DSAB or Housing Corp. at all. It's awarded to the Canadian Mental Health Association, so any questions in terms of funding, operations with the HART Hub would be better directed at the recipient of that funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, we can now vote on the matter. All in favor? Any opposed? That carries.
And that will bring us to bylaws. I've got a motion by Counselors Burney and Caputo, resolved that all bylaws under item 12 of the agenda underdate October 14, 2025, be approved.
All in favor? That carries.
And a motion by Counselors Burney and Caputo, resolved that this council move into closed session to discuss one item concerning a proposed acquisition of land by the municipality or local board, two items concerning labor relations or employee negotiations. Further be it resolved that should the said closed session be adjourned, the council may reconvene in closed session to continue to discuss the same without the need for a further authorizing resolution.
All in favor? Carries.
And a motion by Counselors Kinnick and Segoro, resolved that this council now adjourn.
All in favor? That carries.